State where you are calling from, for instance, the city of Cadillac.
I don't know.
Tell us, Membershippers.
I am here at home in Cadillac.
Ellen Bass?
Present at home in Cadillac, beautiful Cadillac.
Ingalls?
Here from Cadillac.
King? Mayor Filkins?
Here from the city of Cadillac. All right, that takes us to the approval of the agenda this evening. And before we get to the approval of the agenda, I would like to suggest that we move items seven, eight, and B to right after the consent agenda approval this evening.
Mayor?
Yes?
There's one additional amendment as well with respect to adding a resolution that amends Resolution 2019-3340. If you could also include that in your motion. And we would just address that in its normal place and time on the agenda.
That sounds good. Would someone like to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to adopt or to approve the agenda as amended, to add a resolution amending Resolution 3340 under adoption of ordinances and resolutions as item seven dash C and moving item seven A and B to after the consent agenda.
Support. This is Shippers.
House Member Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you want to speak that you state your name and your address for the clerk. And then also making certain that your comments are kept to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Do you want me to take my ears?
Mayor, we have a hand raised, Mr. Conrad Ish.
Okay. Conrad?
Yes, Darryl Conrad Ish, 828 Aspen Street, Cadillac, Michigan. First, I would like to say many years ago, when attending city council meetings, I was treated with dignity and respect, and my opinions were treated as a weight-carrying factor in council decisions. More recently, I've appeared in front of council and felt the opposite. I am not one who attends or speaks at every meeting or gripes about every issue. I'm sorry. Now, things happen, right? Okay. When I appear, it is with purpose, and I would hope my opinions are considered. Lately, it seems the decisions have already been made without public input, and the meeting is a formality. Please prove me wrong. I am concerned about the true possibly unintended effect that the city of Cadillac creating a state of emergency due to COVID-19 pandemic may have. Per my calls, communication, and research today, Cadillac would be the only city in Michigan to take such steps. I had a great conversation with Marcus and learned the intent is to not violate the Open Meetings Act and continue to meet safely and remotely. I have no issue with this reasoning. My concern is that the state of emergency itself is drafted, makes no mention of this. Has council considered the unintended consequences of passing this state of emergency? It would effectively give the mayor the power, for I believe, seven days to do many things within the law is the mayor saw fit as related to COVID-19, i.e. impose curfews, impose business closures, impose mask orders, impose travel restrictions, et cetera. I've been made aware that this is not the intent.
Four is not available.
However, it could be a consequence. I spent most of this year working with Stand Up Michigan as a head administrator, and we partnered with Unlock Michigan to circulate the petition to repeal the 1945 law. As the final signatures were being verified and turned in, the Supreme Court ruled the governor's use of 1945 to be unconstitutional, as we had been saying since April. Sometimes, good things have unintended consequences. That law was on the books since 1945. It had never been used in that manner until it was. Wexford County already has an emergency manager and emergency plans. It seems any order based on our state of emergency, except possibly the basis I am being told it's going to be created for, would affect Wexford County. Why isn't the emergency manager of Wexford County heading this up as Cadillac is in Wexford County, and thus the issue would be resolved? Is it that we don't actually have an emergency? Does council wish to open the door to further uses of this emergency order? Please be aware it could be used for other purposes as currently written, intended or not, in the end.
Hey, Conrad, you're three minutes away.
I got one more sentence, I'm done. Do we in Cadillac have a state of emergency due to COVID-19? If we do, why doesn't Wexford County? If we don't, why would you pass this order as written?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have another hand raised, Ms. Judy Coffey.
Yes, Judy?
Good evening, friends. I wanted to make comment around the election, or the appointment, I should say, of Troy Knight to the Housing Commission. I'm currently the Chair of the Cadillac Housing Commission, and one of our longstanding members, Tom Olstead, resigned a few months ago, and replacement was needed. And Troy indicated his interest. He has a lot of good experience in business. He served in the military. He serves on one of the committees of the council or the city already, and is highly regarded in that role. I just wanted to offer my support and the support of the other members of the Housing Commission for his appointment to that group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have another hand raised. It's a caller ending in eight, six, seven, three.
Okay.
Caller eight, six. Yeah, you're good.
This is Julie Theobald calling. I would also like to address regarding the emergency manager position. I piggyback on Conrad's expressions. I believe this is a slippery slope that we are opening up. Travis has been very well-trained for a county emergency manager. I think he works in conjunction with the city. I think we're duplicating services. And I'm very concerned on where this is going to lead. It sets a precedent. I think it opens up a lot of doors, as he said, intended or not, that are going to have some interesting effects on those.
I was just talking.
I think we really need to reconsider this. Any of these things can be done individually without giving it a mass emergency manager position. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Casey Ramsey.
Okay.
Hi, I'm kind of new to this. My kids tell me I'm a tech tard, so forgive me if I mess up. And if you happen to hear any strange noises, it's just my dog and my cats in the background, so I do apologize for that. I live at 1213 Manning Street. I own a small downtown business called Your Sister's Closet. You know, some of the council members do know me. I've spoken to you before for other incidences. This was brought to my attention in regards to the state of emergency, and it is something that I feel like I have to represent the downtown businesses. It's something that does concern us. This past, you know, 2020 has been rough on absolutely everyone. I have my own mother in the hospital right now, not because of COVID, but for other reasons. And I can't go and visit her. So trust me, this has affected everyone. However, as a business owner, we have had to learn to adapt to, you know, of course, go in with the state orders and so on. And it is something that I have read up in the last, you know, day. And I do, I am very concerned about the state of emergency. And I am concerned of what will end up happening. You know, there's a lot, some downtown businesses that have already closed and won't be coming back. Others that are still closed because of the fact that they're not going to do carryout. Some restaurants, you know, who knows when they're going to be able to, you know, open back up? But for us, you know, we are doing everything we can to keep everyone safe. A lot of the downtown businesses are just doing, you know, they're trying to do online and so on, curbside, you know, private appointment, you know, for shopping and so on and so forth. But I'm going to say it has been a huge struggle. So if this does go into place, I really want you to think long and hard. If anything, you know, happens to come up where you want to close businesses or anything like that, please understand that, you know, it will be devastating to a lot of us. You know, there's a lot of us that are single parents out there that are just trying to keep going. I've said this many times, when you have a small business, you're not in it to get rich, you're in it to be part of the community. I know that there are a lot of places that are huge in our community. After 26 is going to have to be closed. Kelly had to make that hard choice over the weekend because she knew that it was going to be extended out. And sure enough, the governor went on today and extended it out. And we understand that. I have a senior in high school right now that is missing out on their senior experience. And I'm trying to just do everything I possibly can to encourage him and to keep him going. So, you know what? I'm just asking to keep us going. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. JL or Cindy?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Okay, that's the case.
Wait, hang on. Matt?
Okay, Matt?
Hello, I am, my name is Matt Reinisson. I live at 402 Crippen Street. I am a resident and a business owner here in the city of Cadillac. And I too am concerned about the state of emergency. To me, you don't do something just this swift without any other attempts. Our city council and our mayor, our city manager has been pretty quiet with no attempt so far. And to just reach for the stars and declare a state of emergency as a power grab, to me, is uncalled for when we haven't done anything else and any of the other attempts and any other way. As far as appointing somebody as a COVID representative, why would we appoint somebody who, in my eyes, is already failing at the job? Why wouldn't we do some research if that was a route we wanted to take and pick somebody that was the best trained and the best person for the job? So I too have some concerns as to the intended and/or unintended results that this may have on our local businesses. You know, everyone has the opinion, oh, it's just this and it's just that. But no, it's not. These big corporations are the ones that are thriving. And these little businesses that are shutting down, those are the ones that help our community members in need. Those are the ones that help support our kids' baseball teams, football teams. Those are the ones that help support our high school athletics. This is what we're losing. This is what we're affecting, and to me, it is a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think we got a couple people that aren't muted again.
If everyone would please remember to mute.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any more raise or hands raised at this time.
Okay.
Wait, Mr. Watilla is giving me a wave.
Okay.
Think I'm muted. Want to say hi to Mike, Carla, and everyone?
Hi, Mayor.
I fully understand and appreciate what apparently the purpose or stated intent of this is, which is in, at least as stated, intended to deal with being able to hold your meetings remotely. However, and with all due respect, I believe it's a bit of a Pandora's box that has a potential to be open because I'm not clear that you can so restrict the consequence of this simply if you pass this resolution to keeping your meetings remote and open. I believe, and I would not have any problem with this, not taking sides, that you should be ready for people to come in if you pass this and start questioning your overall powers, whether you should override the Michigan Department of Health opinions and rules and regulations that are in effect. In other words, can you, under this act, is there the potential to go in and say, we are going to pass our own rules and open restaurants as opposed to the state's orders? Wait for the next meeting, and let's see what happens on this. I don't believe it's necessary. I do believe that under District 10 Health Department, there are already rules and regulations in place that would allow you to do this very thing. I also want to note and be brief that my wife Cindy, who is a much better attorney than I, did give, and I believe you're aware of, and presented a one-page document with her comments and objections. And I want to make sure those go into the record. So I won't repeat those. I just want to make clear that those have been presented. But as we all know, when laws and regulations are passed, very often they have unintended consequences. And I believe that you really are, and I'm concerned, opening the door to that. Having said that, I do appreciate your time and patience.
Thank you.
I am not seeing any others at this time.
Not going to fall for it this time, Mike. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on with the agenda. And so, next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which this evening contains the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on November 16, 2020, and also the minutes from the closed session that was held on November 16, 2020.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a support?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. So then that will move us to what was seven, A, and B on our agenda. So I'll turn it to Marcus and Mike at this point.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Mike, when you're ready, if you could debrief everybody in the public, that would be wonderful.
Sure. So let me start by saying I understand the concern of people. This Emergency Management Act, in my opinion, would not allow the extensive authority that people have ascribed to it. For example, I don't believe that the city would have the authority to shutter businesses or usurp orders issued by MDHHS under the Public Health Code, nor is that the purpose. But what is the purpose? And the thing that we're sort of pushing up against is the legislature made amendments to the Open Meetings Act under PA 228 of 2020. Those amendments allow public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely through December 31st for any reason whatsoever. But on January 1st, pursuant to the amendments that are made, the public body may only hold meetings remotely for stated purposes. One of those is because a medical condition prevents the attendance of a member of the public body. The other is for military personnel. And the third reason is because of a state or local emergency or disaster. But that local emergency has to be a declared state of emergency. And so, somebody made a comment earlier that there were no other municipalities that have done so. I know of at least one and possibly another that is considering doing the same thing. And that's because of those amendments to the Open Meetings Act. Come January the 1st, if there is not a local state of emergency that is declared by the local municipality, you will lose your ability to continue holding meetings electronically. Now, that wouldn't otherwise present a problem except for we have a limitation right now under the MDHHS order that was issued today, extending that through December the 20th. Under the current order, participation of in-person meetings, that is, indoor gatherings of individuals at non-residential venues is prohibited, which means you cannot hold any in-person meetings whatsoever. Moreover, at least with respect to the city hall's configuration, you would have trouble getting people in a meeting in person without meeting any sort of social distance guidelines as well. So our municipal clients believe that it's important to continue, obviously, holding meetings of the public body, to do the public's business, but to avoid those in-person gatherings. That's going to push up against the Open Meetings Act come January 1st. It is true that the legislature has pending proposed legislation that would again amend the Open Meetings Act, and it would extend the ability of the public bodies to have electronic meetings through, as currently drafted, March 31st of 2021. But the city only has the meeting tonight and another meeting, regular meeting scheduled for December 21st, in which to address this issue. If the legislature passes those amendments to the Open Meetings Act, then declaration of a local state of emergency may not be necessary. But I don't know what the legislature is going to do at this point in time, whether it's going to consider those bills and adopt those bills or whether we will be into the next year before they get to those issues. And that's why it's important, I suppose, for the city to address this either at this meeting tonight or you could address it at the meeting on December 21st as well, try and determine what the legislature may or may not do. The legislature is keenly aware of the issue with the Open Meetings Act. However, it depends on how they're going to vote on those issues. The, in terms of the Emergency Management Act, in order for the city to declare a local state of emergency, it must first appoint an emergency management coordinator under Section 9 of that act. Once it appoints, makes that appointment, then there are certain powers and authority under Section 10 of that act. But they are not as extensive as people might otherwise believe. And in fact, the Emergency Management Act is really to coordinate emergency response among those providers of emergency services, not necessarily to shutter businesses, which, again, I don't believe that authority exists under that act. With all respect to my friend, Mr. Watilla, he indicated that the local orders from your local health department are adequate in order for the city council to continue holding electronic meetings. And I don't believe that that is true. And in fact, at least when it comes to your District 10 Health Department, their most recent order, I believe, was issued November the 23rd, except that it's not an order, it's a public health advisory. And really, the public health advisory is just that. It advises and gives guidance on how to stay safe, sort of reinforces the MDHHS order in terms of guidance and gatherings. But it does not constitute a local health order, as far as I can see, prohibiting any sort of conduct or indoor gatherings. So we have sort of these competing interests between the MDHHS order, which prohibits in-person gatherings at any non-residential venue. And we also have the Open Meetings Act, which, after January 1st, is going to severely limit the public body's ability to meet electronically. So we're sort of pushing up against these deadlines. And so, you know, depending on what happens with the state legislature, we could be in a position where it may not be necessary. Or we may be in a position in which to fulfill our obligation under the Open Meetings Act. If the legislature does not act, it may be necessary to declare a local state of emergency so that the public bodies of the city, which includes, obviously, city council, planning commission, ZBA, Board of Review, all of your public bodies can continue to meet and hold meetings virtually or electronically, thereby providing access to the public as well. There is certainly one other issue, and that is, when we talk about the county, the county does have, as I understand it, an emergency management coordinator. And we learned today that there may be some prior agreement between the county and the city. I have not seen any such document as of yet. I'm certain that we're going to locate any document to the extent that it exists. But the city does have another option, and that is, it could appoint the county as the emergency management coordinator for the city as well. And the city could, through the mayor, declare a local state of emergency. That declaration is good for seven days unless and until the city council extends that state of emergency. So what you have in front of you tonight is sort of the, both the declaration as well as the council's consent to extend it. And we put a date in there by the end of January, not because we know when this issue may be resolved, but rather because we wanted to provide enough time for the city to continue to meet electronically. And yet, it could be, if the legislature does fix the Open Meetings Act, you could terminate that state of emergency early if it's no longer necessary for that purpose. So that's sort of where we stand right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is Mayor Filkins. One thing that I would make note of is that, you know, we do have some options. And I don't think that having to act on this resolution this evening is something that we have to rush into based on the fact that we do have another meeting in two weeks. I appreciate all of the legwork and thoughtfulness that has gone into making certain that we, as an organization and a business, can continue doing business after the first of the year. But a couple of things that I found out today were the fact that the information was in the legislature, and they should be voting on it this week or next to extend it to March 31st. And if that happens, that is before our next council meeting, so we wouldn't have to act on this. And secondly, And secondly, is understanding more or seeing what the documentation is between us and the county. Should we need that support? That that's not another option for us. So I would really appreciate, first of all, I appreciate everyone who spoke this evening. And I absolutely understand your concerns about what most of you thought was that the city was declaring a state of emergency. And that is just not the case. This work was around being able to continue business as usual and taking care of everything that we need to do for the citizens of Cadillac. And so I'll leave it at that and ask for some more input from the other council members.
Well, it would have been nice if I would have known this information as I took phone calls and had to answer questions from my neighbors. But it doesn't sound like what it is. It was a matter of electronic meetings, apparently. It was poorly put out, as I was put on the spot with no advance notice, and not the proper answer, just being told tonight. So that's my thoughts. And I, I talk a lot to my neighbors and people. I wouldn't mind tabling this motion, both motions, until the next meeting. It would make sense. Thank you.
Hi, this is Councilmember Shippers. I also received messages and calls from folks who were concerned about this. I looked at my email and saw an email from Marcus that described the purpose of it. And let's see, when was it? It was, it was earlier this afternoon. So as I was talking to folks, I was able to reassure them that we were not doing this to be able to close any business or to be able to close schools or anything else, that it was, as stated by Mr. Homier, that it was to be able to continue to meet. Having said that, and with added information this evening that the legislature is working on this and that we may be able to rectify this without doing something that, that is really making a lot of people nervous. And I, I so understand that. I, you know, I mean, as soon as I heard emergency manager, I, my, my upper lip started to quiver because of remembering emergency managers in Flint, et cetera. And so I think that at this time, everyone is on edge. We're, we're, we're going into a dark time. We're going into a time where COVID is increasing. People are stressed out. It's the holiday season. And I know our local businesses are, this is the time that they, you know, that they make up for slow times in, in other places. So I would, I would encourage everyone to do everything you can to shop at, support local businesses, find out how they're, how they're managing these orders to be able to patronize them. But having, having said all of this, I think that we have to take the time and count on hope that the legislature can meet and not have to be recessed because they've all been exposed to COVID and actually get this done in time to keep us on, on track and keep us able to function safely and legally. So did, Brian, did you make a motion?
I'm looking at my, I'm looking at my email, I'm sorry. And it's dated 229, but it just popped into my email box.
It was, I was going to add that, excuse me. I was going to add that this information that we all have, the council members all received all of this information in our packet last week. So we didn't just get it today. And I also want to add the fact that, you know, our staff and we, as a council, work very closely with Michigan Municipal League and the state of Michigan and, and the legislature there. And it is not in our bailiwick to ever be trying to do something different in Cadillac, Michigan than the state or the Michigan Municipal League would want us to. I don't think we've heard from Robert yet, and I would like to hear from Robert.
I was just going to say that I strongly agree with the mayor's comments. And I'd like to validate a little bit, you know, the, the public comment and then what Brian was saying, that, you know, we probably should have messaged a little bit better with the public on this, especially when, when you hear the title, emergency management, you know, you can't expect everybody to read, you know, the six pages worth of the order like Conrad, you know, did there, you know, eventually. I think we could have, we could have messaged better. But I definitely support tabling this. And I know that we're trying to do the right thing, so.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point in time, do we need a motion to table this? Or we just table it?
No, you need a, you certainly need a motion. I wasn't sure if Brian had made that motion or not.
I didn't hear a motion.
Then this is TI, and I'll make a motion to table this until we have more information and are able to, well, I just make a motion to table this.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alan Boss?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so then that will take us to, what was item four? Public hearings?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. And I appreciate the dialogue and all the public input as well. As the city attorney mentioned a few minutes ago, we'll, we'll bring this back at your December 21 meeting. That's the only other regularly scheduled meeting we have before the end of the year with, with some additional clarification or, or direction for you guys to consider. But moving, moving along in the agenda, the next item is a public hearing regarding zoning amendment recommendations. And I'm really excited that we're at this point because we are within, I think, a percent or two of being certified through the State of Michigan Economic Development Corporation in regard to the Michigan Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. And we've been working on this project now for a number of years. It's been equated to being a company going through ISO certification. And, and we can certainly attest that it's been quite a long, quite a long journey. But we are finally at that point where we're getting really close. The activity for council to consider or the action for council to consider after the public hearing tonight gets us, gets us even closer. And without any further ado, I'm going to introduce John Wallace, our development director, to provide the brief presentation to council. John?
Thank you, Marcus. As Marcus said, the principal reason for this coming before the council this evening is because of redevelopment-ready communities. But almost equally as important, probably we have 10 references to improving walkability, increasing sidewalks and, and non-motorized transportation within our, throughout our master plan, which is now in its fifth year and probably will be being updated next year. But it, but it is a principal idea that we've carried in the master plan and it is needed to get approval for redevelopment-ready communities. Redevelopment-ready communities really has asked us to have standards that improve non-motorized transportation. And that could involve sidewalks, bicycle parking, traffic calming, pedestrian-scale lighting, and a number of other techniques. I do want to add that what I have tried to do with this ordinance is try to look at it, what would be having the most impact, but also the least burdensome on our business community. This would take place throughout the business community, whether in downtown or in our other commercial corridors. And with respect to what exactly is needed, with the bicycle parking, it's actually, could actually save a business money. The bicycle rack requirements have a credit for auto parking. So in other words, if somebody was going to build a retail store and put in a bike rack, they might be able to save more money in reducing their pavement costs because of their credit on their auto parking, which would more than compensate for the bicycle parking. And if you do look at the requirements for the bicycle parking, it's really a very sort of nominal number in terms of bike rack parking that's required. In most cases, I would, I would bet that the business could implement that with probably maybe $250 or $300. Every parking space that you try to pave because of circulation aisles and so forth would be at least 300 square feet of paving. So it wouldn't take much in a way of auto parking credit to save that money. With respect to the sidewalks, it would require sidewalks on the public rights-of-way for the business. And it would also require private sidewalks on the private property. And what it would require on private property is simply to connect your principal entrance to the public sidewalk system that exists, you know, in that area of the business. And if it didn't have sidewalks, of course, then they would have to install the sidewalks. But, but with the business community and the commercial areas, those are the more intense areas of our city. And they're also, for the most part, adjacent to residential areas that would have the most demand for people walking from their homes to the commercial businesses. With respect to how much sidewalking on the private property, as I mentioned, you would have to connect the public sidewalk system to the principal entrance. And then you would have to connect the principal parking areas to the principal entrance. But not all parking areas. We would take a realistic look and look at where the dominant amount of parking bays are and see if there was a sidewalk connection from those dominant or majority parking areas to the front door. Not every parking bay would be required to have sidewalks. So there would be an evaluation quality that goes along with this. The last three site plans that we have done, the developers have been willing to do this without the benefit of the coercion of an ordinance, the Loom Marijuana Shop, the 412 South Mitchell, the Micro Brewery, and the newly approved Crist Oil Gasoline Station and Convenience Mart. They all met the requirements of this proposed ordinance. And there was no objection raised by the most three, recent three applicants. So I think it's something that really advances quality development in the city. I think it will, it will meet our requirements for the state. And it'll also help us implement our master plan objectives that are located in various sections of the ordinance. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
I have one, John.
Yes.
In two sentences, or preferably even one, if somebody walks up to you on the street and says, "Why are we putting bicycle racks, making stores put up bicycle racks?" A very simple answer, if you would please, that I could relate as people.
Well.
So remember, I said two sentences.
We are requiring it because it's, it improves the effectiveness of transportation within the city. It offers opportunity to not be totally auto-centric.
Okay, there's your two. Is there any type of federal grants involved? Do we have to do this in order to qualify for grants? I know.
Well, if we do not become redevelopment-ready certified, we would not be eligible for a number of grants through the city.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. For any public comments, we do ask that if you want to speak, it's the same as the opening public comment. Please state your name and address. And then please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Mayor, I have Mr. Ish, Conrad Ish, again.
Okay.
Yes, this time I had nothing prepared. Darryl Conrad Ish, 28 Aspen Street, Cadillac, Michigan. I briefly read over this and, you know, I'm not a downtown business owner, but I am a real estate investor and rental owner. And I, I saw that the duplex I own would, would be opted out. However, I own a triplex. And I'm required to have two parking spaces per unit. I don't know what a bicycle ordinance would do to that, but I would have to have a bicycle rack and that would cut my parking down. And I'm just wondering which one of my tenants is going to ride a bicycle in the winter? This doesn't make any sense to me. It really doesn't. Because now granted, in my case of a triplex, I have an efficiency which normally rents to one person and they don't have two vehicles. But in a lot of cases, a triplex is rented by, you know, a couple. And they each have a vehicle that they use year-round. And yes, they may bike downtown Cadillac. But the bottom line is, when, when they decide to go to Traverse City, they're going to utilize their car. And when one of them has to go to work, they're going to utilize their car. So how is the fact that an owner of a triplex or a six-plex or a 12-plex, cutting the amount of parking spaces necessary due to putting in bike racks, how is that going to help their residents? That's my question, I guess. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, at the risk of looking like a fool, I do not see anybody else.
Okay, we'll close the public comment and move back to some discussion with the council or maybe a little bit more feedback from John in regards to the question that was just raised.
Well, I'd have to go back. I don't have it memorized at where it kicks in, whether it's a three or some higher number. Generally, what we looked at is when, when you, what we consider multifamily. And I think it usually starts with three and goes up from there. If it started with four, that would not be a huge issue. The central idea is that for multifamily complexes, whether it be, say, a four-unit building or an eight-unit building or a 10-unit building, the objective is to start being less dependent on the automobile. When we become a more walkable community, we raise real estate values, we raise the ability to provide services to the residents. And with respect to how big a portion of the year, I would dare say, I've observed a fair amount of bike traffic, you know, between six and eight months out of 12. So it's not insignificant. It's not like it's three months out of the year. And I've even seen people tough it out in the wintertime with their bicycles. But I think it's very good from a planning perspective and from a community development perspective to get away from being so totally auto-centric. In fact, we're so auto-centric that in the wintertime, you will see people, instead of using the sidewalks, many times using the streets because we take such good care of clearing the streets and making them more walkable. And I'm sure you've all observed that with people walking in the streets during the wintertime. But the thing about bicycles is, until you establish a certain threshold of connections and systems, they're not used as much as they would be. And once you hit that threshold of having a certain amount of paths or connections, then the use of the bicycles accelerates at a considerable rate. And I've, I've observed this in a number of communities, that as soon as you get to a certain threshold, the bicycle travel really takes off. So that's my thoughts. So that's my thoughts.
Okay, is there any more discussion by the council?
Yeah, this is, this is T.I. It's, I, I, I think that the purpose again for this is to be eligible to apply for grants, and being, being a walkable city has been in our, in our plan for many years. I, there are many people who cycle throughout the winter. All my fellers cycle to work throughout the winter, and that's like the primary mode of transportation for both my husband and my son. So, and I know, you know, I know there are others. This, it's not designed as a gotcha, it's, it's designed as creating possibilities and increasing property values, and increasing the possibility to be able to access grant money and development money because we are trying to be a forward-thinking community. So, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would just like to say, I was just reading, you know, responding to Conrad's comment there. Obviously, on multifamily dwelling, what, three or more units, one space per each 10 dwelling units? Can you explain that, the actual requirement? Not, not the option of reducing parking spaces, but the requirement for the multifamily dwelling, John?
Well, if the statement is one per 10 dwelling units, that, that would be the requirement. If, you know, if there was 12 units, you wouldn't get to a second, you wouldn't get to a second grouping of 10, so you would have to provide parking for just simply one bicycle. It would be very minimal investment at that level. Overall, you're going to see very little bike parking from this. It's just a start.
Looking for, for the automobile part.
Yeah.
The trade-off.
Right, and, and, and there's a credit, I forget what it is, but...
For what, for, go ahead.
The, the auto credit.
Automobile space for each four bicycle spaces?
Right, so if you, if you get a bigger complex or a bigger shopping plaza, they're, they're really, if they take advantage of the auto credit, they should easily be able to cover the cost of the bike parking.
Yeah, I think if a, if a private property owner, somebody who is doing rentals, decided to take advantage of that, and it didn't help their tenants, they would either lose their tenants or, or get rid of it. So it's certainly not required. You'd do it if it helped your tenant, and you'd make, you know, you'd have better business because of it, or you wouldn't, so. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a, make a motion to approve the resolution, adopt ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance regarding pedestrian sidewalks and bike parking.
Allen Bass.
Shippers' support.
Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so this evening, we do have one appointment for consideration?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the appointment of Troy Knight to the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire on December 7, 2025.
This is council member Shippers, and I would restate everything that Judy Coffey spoke of earlier, and I would be very honored to appoint, make a resolution to appoint Troy Knight to a five-year term with the Cadillac Housing Commission.
This is Ingalls.
And agree with everything you said.
Yeah, and let me also, I got to serve with Troy on the ZBA for a while too, and he is definitely a very contributing member, helpful contributing member to that board.
Okay, so we have the support?
Second.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Mayor Falcons?
Absolutely, yes, thank you. Motion carries. And that takes us to the city manager's report this evening. Marcus?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item under the manager's report this evening is with respect to a credit assessment slash loan facilitating agent that we need for our drinking water revolving fund loan project. That project has to do with phase two of our wealth relocation project, or the new, new wellfield project. As a part of that loan process, and in order to actually secure that funding through the state's drinking water revolving fund, which is a loan program from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, is Department of the State of Michigan, we need to bring on board a loan facilitation agent, as well as have a thorough credit assessment performed by a rating agency. As you'll notice in the council communication in your packets, there are a host of bullets that identify what potential fees are, are for that type of service, both the service of having a facilitation agent brought on board, and the service of having the thorough credit analysis done by a rating agency, which in this case would be Standard and Poor's. As you'll see in the recommendation, it's with respect to utilizing Warren Kramer from R.W. Baird out of Traverse City, Michigan. Baird and Warren have served as the city's financial advisor, or in a sense, our loan facilitation, facilitation agent for the city in prior loans through, through Eagle, and has advised us on many other issues over the years. Based on the history of using R.W. Baird for this professional service, that recommendation this evening is to continue to utilize the firm again for this work. As you'll see in the recommended action, we are requesting that the city council waive the competitive bidding, and then subsequently authorize the engagement of R.W. Baird as our loan facilitation agent. The amount we're requesting is $19,500, and utilize Standard and Poor's for a required credit assessment. This fee is estimated to be $16,875 at the current 2020 rates, but it is expected to change slightly by the time the city goes through this process in early 2021. We do have proceeds from the drinking water revolving fund loan that will be available to fund all of these services. Our finance director and utilities director are also in this meeting for any more technical questions you might have regarding other requests.
I have a question. I seem to have a lot of questions. For the taxpayers out there, Marcus, could you explain for $20,000 what a loan facilitation agent actually does?
Sure, sure, and I'll, I'll allow Owen to, to clean up the mess. But the, basically, the loan facilitation agent is going to ensure that the loan or the bond that we're getting, they're actually, they're actually getting the, that financial, the financial funds for us to use as it absolutely directly correlates to the loan agreement that we're going to have with. So they're, they're basically the, the broker in the middle. And now, and I know I probably said it a little more clunkier than you would say it, so feel free to clean, clean that up.
Yeah, so we, we provided the actual proposed engagement letter with the packet, and under section one of that, it does a pretty good job of explaining what, what this service does. Basically, review and evaluate the proposed terms of the loan, let us know that we're getting exactly what we expect that we're getting.
Owen, we may get the packet, but I'm asking for the taxpayers who are sitting at home and wondering why we're paying $20,000 to these people. So that's who you're talking...
I guess the, the bottom line answer is that we have, it's required.
Okay.
Also, the packet, just so everybody knows, the, the day that council gets the packet, it's also available to the public as well. That same day, it's all put on our website and available at City Hall if somebody wanted to ask for a copy. So it's, everything is very open.
Anybody ever asked for one in City Hall?
In, in years past, yes.
Yeah, not anymore.
Not anymore.
Again, there's, as part of the application process, that we're required to have, basically, four professional services on the DWRF. So it's the engineer, it's the financial advisor, it's the credit assessment, and then it's, it's legal. So those are the things that they asked for on the initial application and that we're required to, to provide to them.
Thank you.
Yep, and that's why I tried to provide some data that I had consulted with Eagle with to provide, just so that we understand the scope of what these kind of services cost. And if you look at those, those comparables that we did provide, the cities, you know, when, they're typically based on the size of the loan. And so when I asked the, the guy that we work directly with, with Eagle, number one, he was concerned of finding too many that use someone else other than Baird, because Baird is one of their primary people that work with this program. Number, number two, finding one close to the scope of our loan. Our loan is closer to 10 million. And so you can see, all of the loans presented on the comparables are, are underneath what the city's loan amount is, and all but two of them, the cost is greater than, than what we're proposing to pay. And I think part of that is, we do a lot of the work in-house as far as the cash flow work, the user charge system work. The bulk of that is done here in my office, so we, we try to, to control our costs that way as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding loan facilitation agent credit assessment for drinking water revolving fund loan. Allen Bass?
Support, Ingalls?
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. And the second motion?
Um, I make a motion to authorize the engagement of R.W. Baird as loan facilitation agent for $19,500, and Standard and Poor's for required credit assessment with an estimated fee of $16,875. Allen Bass?
Support, Ingalls?
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, very much appreciate your support, and it's great to be able to hit another milestone with respect to that project that's been going on for, for quite a number of years. It'll be great to have a saw there for the ribbon cutting. Uh, moving on to the next item, it's with respect to an easement that's needed regarding a water transmission line. As you'll, you'll note in the communication that's before you, in order to accommodate the installation of a new water transmission line or a main, as it pertains to the 44th Street Wellfield project, that's the same new wellfield project that we were just talking about, the city does need from the White Pine Village Development, basically them to grant us an easement to make, to make that part of the connection work. After city staff discussed the overall project with representatives from the White Pine Village, they are willing to, to grant the city an easement in exchange for the city reimbursing them with their potential cost would be, and preparing the necessary documentation on their side. Those, those costs in the, in the work that are before them include a review that they have to get from Fannie Mae, their lender, a review that they're going to get through their own legal services as well. The estimated expense for the, for the professional services is between $10,000 to $15,000 that, that they're going to be asking us to reimburse them for. Additionally, the White Pine Village Development has also requested that a small portion of our property, which you can see in the, in the communications, it's shown on the following map, that extends over their sidewalk, also be exchanged or vacated by the city as a part of us acquiring the easement. And sort of as an aside, but the city is, is, staff at least, are more than happy to, to vacate that strip of property, especially since the sidewalk that White Pine Village put in, put in over city property. By, by having us vacate that property, it perhaps even reduces our own liability, given that overlap of our property and their sidewalk. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. As you'll see, the recommended action this evening would be to reimburse the White Pine Village Development for their costs as estimated, for the city to acquire the easement and to proceed with the necessary steps to transfer the desired property to the development. Funds are available in the water and sewer fund accordingly, and if you haven't picked up on, on what I'm saying yet, just to try to be even clearer, you know, we'll, we'll have to come back to council when we look at, at vacating that strip of land and have you sign off on that as well. So this is the first of at least one or two titles that will come before you guys for discussion purposes. And again, on, on the line this evening is both our utilities director and our finance director that might be able to address any more technical questions regarding the project.
Is it possible, is it possible in the meeting to show, to share those two slides to, that, that we're looking at with the proposed easement that we're getting and then the trade-off? Can you flash those on the screen?
Um, Mike, are you able to screen share on that?
Embarrassed by it, but you're probably not. I don't know, but somewhere you can change.
So...
Please make sure you're, sorry about that, Marcus. Just to everybody that's in the meeting, please make sure that your phones or your computers are muted.
So thank you, Mike. As, as everyone can see on Mike's screen, the image shows the current easement along with the proposed additional 10-foot easement that is pointed to the sort of crosshatched area that is needed by the city. And then if you go to the second map, you'll see the shaded area is city property currently, and you'll see within that property is the sidewalk, that is the White Pine Village Development sidewalk, not a city sidewalk. And they are requesting that we vacate that property to them accordingly, which, again, under our staff analysis, we're, we're more than happy to, to do that. I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to show the other easement again, and council member, I think it was council member Ingalls that requested, does that, does that help clarify?
That's very clear. Thank you.
So Mayor, back to you.
I was talking, and I was muted. So if there are no, if there are no other questions or discussions, would someone like to entertain a motion?
This is council member Shippers. I'll make a motion to authorize the city to reimburse the White Pine Village Development for their costs as estimated, for the city to acquire the easement, and proceed with the steps necessary to transfer the desired property to the development.
Support, this is Ingalls.
Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item on the manager's report is with respect to reporting out of an emergency repair of a private sewer main off of Granite Street. The city unfortunately had to remedy a situation under an emergency bait. There's no action required for city council to take tonight, rather, this is a reporting out, as I am required to do so. The homeowner located off of Granite Street was experiencing problems with their sewer. They contacted the city, and it was initially diagnosed as a problem within a private sewer line. However, upon further examination, it was, it was determined that the city's line went through their private line, and therefore was the cause to the sewer issue that they were experiencing. Since the part of Granite, Granite Street... Since the part of Granite Street is still under Michigan Department of Transportation authority where this all occurred, MDOT was involved and they had to follow MDOT regulations regarding rerouting of traffic and other guidelines to affect the repair of the street and the whole situation, which of course added some additional costs to the work that was done. The quote that the homeowner had for the work was $22,500. The repair was completed on November 20th of 2020. And I do believe that we are still awaiting final invoicing. Owen, can you clarify that?
Yes, we have not paid the bill yet. The work is done. It was remedied immediately because the street was already torn up.
And we believe that it's going to be $22,500?
Correct. Yep, it was as quoted. And it was, I think in the communication, it says that's an MDOT trunk line road. So that they got to follow all the guidelines as far as for lane closures and even the restoration and reconstruction of the street. So made it a little bit more expensive, unfortunately.
And so funds for that will be coming out of our utilities fund presumably to pay for the unanticipated cost. Are there any questions of me? There's no, again, there's no action that council is required to take at this point in time. Council will be looking at a budget amendment at the last meeting in the calendar year that I believe will accommodate this unforeseen expense. But there's no action this evening.
So something was done on our part 30 years ago that wasn't done right? These things happen.
Yep. Yes, Mayor?
Thank you, Marcus. Do you have a COVID-19 update for us this evening?
It's a very brief one. It's simply direct people if they're looking for additional data this evening on COVID-19 as it relates specifically to our area and specifically to Wexford County. The District Health Department Number 10 is a great place to find those resources. www.dhd10.org is their website. You can find information on that there. Additionally, the governor addressed the state at approximately 2:30 this afternoon. And as we talked about earlier this evening, there was an extension with respect to the current health department orders regarding restrictions. That extension now takes us until, I want to say it's a Sunday, December 20th. In-person meetings are still prohibited. And, you know, as I think council already discussed, or I should say, I think I know council already discussed, we'll be coming back to council in a couple of weeks with additional information as to how best to proceed.
All right, thank you, Marcus. Okay, that takes us to the adoption of a resolution this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Obviously, we already addressed the other two resolutions earlier and we tabled them. The next resolution is a resolution with respect to an amendment to Resolution Number 2019-3340. This resolution has to deal with a tax incentive program through the commercial rehabilitation district that was put in place to assist with the development of the Lake Cadillac Resort property formerly known as the Sands on the west end of town. In looking at essentially closing the books on the program as the year end approaches, the state of Michigan advised that we're lacking a sentence in the resolution that council previously approved back in October of 2019. And that sentence is as follows, and it is basically directly out of their act. The sentence would state, "Whereas the rehabilitation includes improvements aggregating 10% or more of the true cash value of the property at commencement of the rehabilitation as provided by Section 2K of Public Act 210 of 2005." And again, Public Act 210 is the public act with respect to the commercial rehabilitation program that the state allows. This clarifies for the state that it is a part of it and would recommend that the city council approve this resolution this evening that effectively amends the resolution that was previously presented. And thank you to finance, specifically Owen. Thank you for coordinating all this with the state of Michigan.
Yeah, and if I can just add, this is not a required part of the resolution in the act. As Mike points out, and it is a little frustrating because they just kind of picked this one thing that they want actually in the resolution. And they tell you after you submit the one that you passed before that complied with every part of what's in the act as required in the resolution. So it wasn't a miss by any means. It was another checkbox that the state sent us back and said, hey, we want this in there, even though it doesn't say so in the act. It's the requirement of the 10% is in the act, but not that you included in your resolution. So wanted to point that out as well.
Thank you. Okay, no further discussion. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to adopt resolution, amending Resolution Number 2019-3340. Ellen Bass?
This is Ingles. I support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening in our packets, we do have the minutes and reports of the zoning board of appeals from their October 15th meeting, 2020, and also the planning commission from October 26, 2020. If anyone would like to see those, those are out on the city website. At this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment this evening.
Hearing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
Sorry, Mayor, we had Mr. Conrad Ish again.
Okay, all right, I apologize, Conrad. Go ahead.
It's okay. I don't have anything prepared. And I was just trying not to unmute and go with the process. A number of things, first of all, I wanted to say with the bicycle parking issue, as far as I read, that is required. It is not an issue that you could bypass later deciding that your tenants wanted to utilize spaces instead. Just wanted to point that out. You know, when you're required to do it, you're required to do it. It's not something you could bypass. Secondly, you know, I do a lot of things as far as paying contractors. And I got to say, unless I'm a buddy with a person and he knows he has to come in at a certain price or else, or there is another contractual agreement out there that causes an issue with that contractual agreement, there is no reason to waive competitive bidding ever, ever. I don't understand why you would do that. The last thing has to do with the sewer line on Granite Street because if you remember when I appeared a number of times on Cadillac Castle objecting to multiple things, I talked about the sewer line issue on Aspen Street. I have since purged city council, purged et cetera, et cetera. I have replaced the entire sewer main on the 844 Aspen Street in question of freeze. So that was at my expense. I did that. And I expect that solves the problem. When, due to the Pollard Street property ejecting into that line, I understand when we pulled that up, I used Frankie's, Frankie Septic, specifically because they worked with the city Cadillac. And the city Cadillac came out and you agreed to replace a number of issues in the sewer main itself, because there were indeed issues in the sewer main. However, that Pollard Street address still dumps into the sewer main with an ejector pump. And I believe that it's still going to cause a problem this winter. We may be speaking about that later. However, there has since been a sale of in what is called 910 Aspen Street. And the investor was told that they could tear that house down, put up a duplex, and do the same ejector pump theory into the end-of-line sewer in front of my 844 Aspen Street. I just want you to keep that in mind because I'm going to have a large problem with that. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any others at this time.
We'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the good of the order this evening. Does anyone have anything?
Mayor, it's Marcus. I think our utilities director might still be on. And I know that there were some questions that were just thrown out about Aspen Sewer. I don't know if Jeff wouldn't be prepared necessarily this evening to get into any lengthy explanation. But we can certainly reach out to Mr. Ish and talk to him about what his concerns are regarding the improvements that were made along Aspen Street, all of which I think may have been done on private service lines, done on public lines. But all that being said, we can, we'll reach out to him accordingly.
Thank you.
Well, I've got one thing. My wife and I went down to look at the lights after Thanksgiving. It was very nice. The tree base were wrapped very nicely. It looked very good. Could have had a few more lights on the big Christmas tree. And we moved stars all along Chestnut Street. But overall, you know, very nice, good job, people in charge of that. I think the guy in charge of that is on here right now. Yeah, it looked good. It was very nice.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'd like to expand on something I mentioned earlier in our discussion, and that is ways to support our local businesses. One of the things that we did early on in the, when everything was locked down, boom, in March, is to get gift certificates. I know we got gift certificates for our people that did the hair so that to help, you know, tide the time over, you know? And I'm wondering if our local merchants, somebody asked me once, is there a place to go to see which local merchants offer gift cards or even curbside service? And I didn't have an answer for that. I kind of looked around. But that might be something that, I don't know, if some of the city could do, the Visitors Bureau could do, Chamber, somebody that could make it easily accessible so that people can go and find our local business people so that we can support them while they're, you know, having to wait for appointments or whatnot. So I recommend everybody find someplace that you shopped and call them up and say, can I get a gift card for my kid or for whomever? Or, you know, I bought gift cards for myself and then actually, because I knew then when we were all back in business that those gift cards would mean the income at that time would be slow. I kind of misplaced my gift card. But anyway, there are ways to support our local business people, and I hope all of us will do that.
Thank you, TI. And the Visitors Bureau does have that information. And in the past, they have coordinated certificates and such. So, but it's a wonderful reminder to everyone. So, Robert, did you have anything this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, with that then, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Everybody, please stay safe and healthy. Good night.
Thank you.